Who's gonna talk? Oh, reverse.
It's six thirty. Welcome to the regular city council meeting, the city of Starbuck for November fourteenth. And we'll start with pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Joan, if you'd call the roll call, please.
Mayor Swenson.
Here.
Councilor Gorders absent. Councilor Tate, Councilor Bockel.
Here.
Councilor Hanson.
Here.
Okay, the first item on the agenda is consent agenda. And we'll start with the agenda itself. Are there any additions or changes to the agenda?
I have one addition to discuss the bid we got from Johnson Controls for the heating and air conditioning here in the building.
Okay.
We could add that to new business.
The last item, or?
Sure.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
I'll second.
Good. We have a motion by Councilman Tate to approve the agenda as amended, seconded by Councilwoman Bockel. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Next part of the consent agenda is to approve the claims for payment in the minutes of the previous meetings, which is a council meeting for October eleventh. Is there any discussion or questions on that? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve it.
I'll make.
I'll make a motion to approve the claims for payment and approve the amendments from the previous meetings October eleventh, twenty twenty-two.
I'll second that.
Okay. We have a motion by Councilwoman Hanson to approve the remainder of the consent agenda, seconded by Council, Councilman Tate. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. We will close the regular council meeting at six thirty-three and open the first public hearing on the vacation of a dedicated road between two oh six and two oh eight Main Street to Wallen Street. So if anybody has any comments, please come forward to the lectern, identify yourself, give your address, and you can have three minutes to comment, so.
Hello.
Hi.
My name is Eugene Hurt. My wife Susan Hurt is here, and we live at two oh seven Wallen. So in other words, I have the house on the corner, a brown house that's falling apart on the corner, and then the, and then the, my house. So we're on either side of the alley. Used to be alley. So what I'm asking is, is A, will we get that land, if it's vacated, will we get that land? And will we be responsible for taxes on it? Will it be a slow motion kind of thing? Or will it be immediate? How does this all work? And then number two, if it's vacated, does that mean then that no one will be able to use their cute little golf carts or whatever to go to that new brewery or whatever? And all that kind of stuff that's going on on the corner there? How will that affect us? Is what I'm asking. And then number three, if it gets vacated and they build the patio on that side of the brewery, are they going to do anything where the ambulance office, ambulance office is? Is that gonna turn into a parking lot eventually? Are we gonna have parties going on? Because, you know, we live right there. And, you know, we moved here for peace and quiet, not to have a party going on Friday and Saturday night. So those are the three main things I'm interested in at the moment. And then after that, I might have questions. How's that sound? Thank you.
Can you speak in?
Yeah, yeah, we have, we're old, we have a hard time hearing, by the way.
Okay. Yeah, so please turn on your mics if you have any comments. But, yeah, my understanding is that the adjoining property owners would, would have that property, that portion of the alley adjacent to their lot.
We don't want that.
What? So adjacent property owners would, would acquire that land portion of the alley adjacent to their lot. The, it would then be your land, so it's private property. Golf carts could not go across your private property and so forth. There's, to our knowledge, there's no plans to make it into a parking lot or anything. And, you know, the ambulance would still be there, so. So I don't know if that answers your three questions, or?
Well, I'm just concerned about the, if, if the, if it all happens and you have a nice patio and everything there.
Could you come up to the mic, please? So we're recording, we're recording this.
Oh, I see. So if that happens, and then they have the cute little patio on one out there, you know, what about the noise control? Well, how is that gonna affect us? Or is there gonna be anything in, you know, are we gonna get notices if there's a big parties going on or anything like that? Like I said, we moved here for nice peace and quiet, not to have a, not to have a bar at the corner of us or whatever, you know, brewery there. So how's that gonna work?
Well, I could maybe ask the, one of the co-owners to respond. Yeah, please do.
Glad to meet you. I'm very concerned about that.
Sure, I see you are.
We have something in common, so.
Maybe. So, you know, breweries, they're not like bars. That isn't our intention. Breweries are places where people come together. I, my theory on a brewery is it's a community place. People come together, they share ideas there, and our hours of operation are gonna, we're gonna close at ten. Because I don't wanna be there until two o'clock in the morning.
Oh, well, this is very good news. I'm happy about that, and I don't blame you.
This is Dean and I, and my brother and another partner are probably gonna be the beer tenders. I can tell you that's gonna go on for quite some period of time. And that's a model I'm following from the town I come from, on a video.
Okay.
Where I see business people come together. I see people from all walks of life come together. They come, they share, hopefully have a good beer that we hopefully will make.
Okay.
The patio is a way for us to have ADA compliant entryway.
Oh, I see, okay.
And it is a place for people to sit and ju, enjoy at least some view toward the lake as we're opening our open hours. And we think it'll look really nice, complement the building as you come in from the city to the south, so.
Okay, so you're gonna be closing at ten, so we won't have parties and stuff going on. Well, that's a, that's a very nice thing to know. Okay.
I'll be open, I'll be very honest with you, there might be a time or two, we have somebody playing a guitar or a small band out on the patio on a Saturday, but it'll be in the afternoon.
Okay, in the afternoon. Okay, okay. All right, well, that's, that's, that's even better. All right. So you're not gonna use that, if they don't vacate the alley?
Correct.
You're not gonna use that alley for golf carts and all this kind of stuff?
If you vacate the alley, then it's your private property, so they can't trespass it.
So if they don't vacate, is what I'm saying.
They could. It's, it's an alley right now.
Right, well, it hasn't been used in years.
Right now, not being vacated, if somebody wanted to drive down or drive past your house, it wouldn't be a thing you could do about it, it'd be public.
Right.
So you'd actually make it private and you'd control it.
Right, right, right. It's ever hasn't been used for years.
Correct. It hasn't been used for years because there isn't a curb cutout on it. But if somebody actually wanted to force the issue, they could. But if you, you know, if it's your property, then they can't.
Then we wanna be our property. Okay.
Thank you.
Answers my question, at least.
Are there any other questions or comments regarding the? Please state your name and address, please.
I'm Bill Peterson, and I have property at one oh five West Third Street. And I had a bunch of questions here, and you've answered almost all of them, because of the last gentleman. And in the last council meeting, one of the statements was, we have two campgrounds, and this is from Mayor Swenson. We have two campgrounds who will want to come to the brewery. How will they legally get to the brewery on their golf carts without the alley, asked Swenson. And Payne responded that they welcome everyone and believes that there are other ways to access the brewery without the alley. I would like to know what those other ways are.
Well, cur, currently, you know, golf carts can use any city street or alley. If that, if that wasn't an alley, then, you know, they could, you know, cross over from the alley behind, or directly across from the brewery, they could come directly across the highway from that alley or, or, you know, park on the side street and walk over to the brewery or, or whatever, you know, so. But they would not be permitted to use the alley, you know.
Or the main road, Highway twenty-nine.
Highway twenty-nine, you can, golf carts are not allowed on the highway.
Right.
And they can only cross it diagonally, so, yeah.
And what about parking? What's been gonna, gonna happen with parking if you have, I don't know, twelve, fifteen, twenty cars? Where are they gonna park?
Maybe he'd like to.
Also, rather large building.
Yep.
We feel the parking will be all front, and then you do have street parking, which is legal.
Okay. All right.
Yeah, we got that whole big parking lot.
So, okay, so we want to talk about people parking, you know, on our street, walking over.
Well, I can't, I, I guess I can't guarantee they wouldn't park on your street and walk, but that's a. It's a public concern, but it's also, it's also the right of, of anyone to park on a, on a public street.
Right, right, but they won't be coming through the yard or anything, because I won't.
I would hope that they wouldn't. I can't control that. That would not be my night of Zion. If I saw somebody do that, I would probably say, hey, don't do that. You know, I, I think I still have some semblance of people are neglecting themselves, improper behavior, but I can't, I can't control their behavior. We'll do our best.
Last issue is the snow removal that came up in the last meeting also. That they have used that lot for a lot of snow removal dumping. Is that gonna continue or not?
That was discussed, and I think there was some discussion in the last council meeting about the snow removal. And, I don't know, Ted, were you involved in that discussion?
It pretty much got left. We're just gonna approach it as it happens. We might not gain snow this year, we don't know, and it's just one of those things that it has to be hauled out, it has to be hauled out.
All right.
Any other comments or questions? If not, we'll close the first public hearing at six forty-three and open the second public hearing on the new ordinance regulating the sale of THC tetrahydrocannabinol. At six forty-four. So if there's any comments on that ordinance, if anybody's reviewed it or looked at it, you know. And.
Well, I did have a question about that. That seems to be an ongoing thing, you know. Apparently this country has become more like Europe for some reason. So whatever the deal is, or is that gonna be the same controls as alcohol? Is that what it's gonna be based on? You're not gonna have people eighteen years old being able to purchase THC?
The state law requires that any sales are only to somebody over twenty-one, twenty-one or older.
Okay, okay.
And there, there would be a licensing fee, and there'll be a discussion on what zoning districts in the city would be eligible to have, to sell.
Okay. Yeah, I was wondering, you're not gonna be able to go pick it up in a regular store or something that's gonna be in a liquor store kind of environment, correct?
No, you can't even be in liquor stores.
It can't be in liquor stores or, or anything.
It's gonna have to be a special.
Or within three hundred feet of a school, or, or.
Oh, I see, okay. So there's gonna be control, there's not gonna be the wild wild west.
Yeah, and if we didn't do anything, then it would be a free-for-all for anybody. They could sell out of their car, out of their mobile home.
Put it in brownies.
Okay, all right. Just checking to make sure. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Any other comments or questions? If not, I'll close the second public hearing on the new ordinance regulating the sale of THC at six forty-six, and we'll reopen the regular council meeting, so. Next item on the agenda is Larry Van Houtt and Nick Kuz with Woodset.
Hey, just here to give you a brief update on the twenty twenty project. We're working on assessments. Again, I think we told you here a month or so ago that we're still trying to, you know, got costs from MINDOT. Now we've gotta go through and try to break that out. They don't have their final, final numbers to us, but, you know, we're, you know, based on what we know and the original agreement we had with MINDOT, I think we're gonna be pretty close. We're working on that. Splitting all the costs between sewer, water, storm sewer, and street. Yeah, one thing we've got is a lot of funding sources to balance, because you got MINDOT with a bunch of sources. We had the small cities money with amenities and lighting. We're bringing that in. So anyway, we've kind of got it down to where we think we're close. Well, in the ballpark, I should say, we did calculate it based on a thirty-five percent assessment. That's what we presented at the last assessment hearing that we had. So we have kind of a handout here that I think you all got with this sheet right here is the assessments we had at the hearing. And I think it was February of twenty, yeah, twenty twenty, so below, over two and a half years ago. And you'll see the Ozbid assessments, those are the numbers we had at bedtime. The street was like thirty-nine bucks a foot. Water main was fifty-seven hundred per connection about, and sanitary sewer was seventy-two hundred. So a hundred-foot lot, and these are, the numbers at the bottom are switched around, but a hundred-foot lot with street, water, water and sewer would be about fifteen grand. So we did, as we, the next sheet behind it is the numbers that we're coming up with. A cost, one thing, there's two numbered, two columns on the right. The reason being is it's, we're trying to get that small cities grant figured out as far as where that money, you know, was allocated to the lighting, or was there some other stuff that was used for? No, again, it was supposed to be for amenities and lighting. I, some of it was for the lighting on Fifth, you know, which wasn't part of our assessment project, so we're pulling that off. And then whatever's remaining, we think is going against the MINDOT, but we just need to verify that with John Ford, just to make sure we got the numbers right. So if you look at the, for those two right columns, if the, all the small cities apply to our project, it could be down to a hundred, ten dollars a foot, or if without it, it's like twenty-five bucks a foot. So there's quite a spread there that, on that. So we wanna make sure that number's right. The sanitary sewer is about five grand. The big, biggest reason that's quite a bit less is because of the contaminated soils. You know, we thought we were gonna run into a bunch of contaminated soils over here, and we did run into that. And then the water main, looks, looks like it was a, a little more, so. So anyway, the cost for a hundred-foot lot preliminary with if, if we, all the small cities apply is thirteen-five. So it looks like generally, I think it's gonna be less than what we said at the hearing. And we'll just continue to work through those numbers. I think our plan is to just verify these costs and probably sit down with Joan and Randy and kind of go through the costs, make sure we got them allocated in the right spot, then look at every parcel and make sure we got the assessment right on every parcel. Because I know some we dropped out, you know, we deleted services, we didn't do them, but we did add some too. So we just need to go through that and possibly bring that back to work session for council. You know, take a look at all the individual assessments and see what the numbers look like. So that's our plan on those assessments. Make sense, or any questions?
How long do you think that will take?
Like, within the next week or two, try to have these numbers hammered out.
So we're looking possibly at the first week or two of December.
Possibly, you know, get the numbers, then you gotta pass a resolution, and we gotta send out notices. It's probably gonna be, you know, December, January before we have that hearing, unfortunately. But again, we just don't have the numbers right now to really, you know, firm that up. And so, anyway, we'll keep you posted on that, and, yeah, we can review them at a special meeting if you are on work session.
Okay. You think adding to that neck, or?
And then the next thing we had on there was a park, DNR Parks Grant. I guess there's been discussions in some recent meetings about park improvements and possibly ADA improvements at your park and then at the swimming beach. And just wanted to, we got just a letter here, I'm not gonna read this to you. But there is a program, DNR's got a program where it's up to fifty percent grant. I think it's up to three hundred thousand local shares, so it'd be six hundred thousand dollar total grant or total project cost with three hundred max grant portion that's out there. There, it's a March twenty-three deadline, end of March of twenty-three, so you got some time here. But there's some, you know, with the, the grant, it could pay for a rollout mat for the beach, you know, ADA compliant playground equipment, possibly rehab the tennis courts into pickleball courts, some fencing. If you wanted to do something with the marina with, you know, ADA accessible dock or fishing pier, that could be something. It's just a concept of, you know, is this something the city's interested in or not? So again, there is, you know, funding out there. It is competitive. I think we've had one, I think the last couple of years, we've had, you know, grants we've read that have gotten funded to this program, so. So it's doable. So, anyway, we just wanted to throw this out there for something to think about, because it has come up at the council meeting. We don't need to decide something today. You know, again, we could talk a little bit more about it at a work session if the councils have some interest in this.
Larry, you did, you did mention the tennis courts and the pickleball courts that would have be eligible for.
That was our understanding, Gary. And again, we can dig into that a little bit more, but again, this is something we can just get you thinking right now, if that's something you wanna try to go after or not. You know, identify your needs and decide what you wanted to apply for, if you wanna do that. So, then at the bottom of the second page, there's some other sources that, you know, potentially, you know, I don't think are quite as attractive as the, you know, the DNR grant. So it's something to think about there. And then the last thing was Marina Lighthouse. There's a, you know, some talk about trying to replace the lighthouse at the marina. I met with Gary on it. We've also met with the DNR and the Soil and Water Conservation District and kind of met down there in the marina just to see, you know, what could be done and, you know, what's reasonable here. So anyway, the thought was is maybe move that lighthouse across the marina to the south side. And so we kind of talked to the DNR and Soil and Water, and they basically, DNR, if it's below the high wa, ordinary high water, they got jurisdiction. If it's above that, then it's under soil and water. So there's some question, as far as permitting goes, who's, who's got responsibility or not? So kind of what they suggested is if the city's got some interest in this, is to kind of put together a little plan on what you'd like to do. Send it to those folks so they can kind of look at it, and then they could get back to us, okay, this is what you need for permitting or what the requirements would be. At least give us some idea, a first flush on what we could do. I know the DNR is a little concerned about, you know, when the shoreline ordinance about vegetation removal, they were concerned about that. They were concerned about lighting. It's a lighthouse, they're gonna have lighting, but, you know, they don't want it, you know, dark sky compliant, that's pointing directly up in the air. And so they brought up some issues that they want us to look at. We did kind of do a little concept plan. You know, if you wanted to do a park, a little park down there, those men talk about that. That's just a little concept that you could think about, doesn't mean you have to do this. But just give you kind of an idea of a little plan, we could, you know, if the city kind of wants to do something, submit it to the DNR and those folks, okay, this is what we wanna do, what do we, you know, what permits and that do we have to follow for the environmental requirements? So that was, again, this would be just, again, put in the lighthouse, we probably have to clear out some vegetation. And, you know, here you get a pitting table and, you know, maybe a little bench or something like that. Keep it pretty simple, I think, is what we've talked about. And they've got this other handout, you know, just kind of, again, shows what the old one looked like. The second page is just that peninsula out there. When we met with those folks, one thing they kind of brought up is if that was a natural peninsula out there or if it was man-made. You know, at least what I can find, it was probably man-made. And I sent that to them to take a look at. We think it's probably when they dredged the marina, that was probably their spoil pile. Okay.
Who did we provide that to, Larry?
Kelly Erickson is who I sent it to.
Oh, okay. Not, not to Emily or?
No, I just started with Kelly first, Kelly Erickson, I sent it to him, and, you know, because right now we think it's under his jurisdiction, but we'll see what he comes back with. I just sent that to him late last week. And then the last page was just to kind of come up with a rough cost. For just the lighthouse itself, this does include site work, because again, I still don't know what you wanted to do for park improvements. That's something we'd have to add. Like I said, there'd have to be probably some trees, you know, cleared out. It is one thing the DNR and Soil and Water mentioned, they would not want us to put riprap there. They'd want us to keep that natural vegetation as much as we could, just to protect the, you know, the peninsula there. So we come up with about ninety grand total. You know, just kind of a rough estimate, that's all it is. That included, let's see here, let's see what he assumed when he did that estimate. He assumed a metal standing seam roof, aluminum storefront for the windows with a low double pane, low E glass. Doors, aluminum storefront, wall panels, cement board siding, and the trim would be cement board trim, is what he used for his estimate. The architect did. All right, it's just something to think about here, but then the next step would be to, you know, submit something to the DNR and, and Soil and Water just to see what they think, if, what it would take, you know, would they permit it? And what permits we'd have to get before you decide to proceed.
Did they mention if they wouldn't permit it in this place, would there be a problem putting it back where it was originally?
They did not say there would be any issue with that. I mean, then, we never talked about it much, but I guess I don't know that would be an issue. I don't know that, but. Probably be easier getting it permitted, but again, we just don't know who's got jurisdiction here. And, you know, with it not being a natural peninsula, it sounds like it's more straightforward, is what it sounded like. If it was, if it was natural, then there'd be a lot more permitting required.
I mean, cost-wise, putting it back in the original location, we'd probably still have to have some kind of pilings or, or whatever.
We wanna look at it. Again, we do have in that cost estimate to have someone come out and just bore it to make sure we know what we're sitting on. To, when we did borings there, I think ten years ago, when they looked at the marina lighting, and, you know, Braun found there was, you know, a lot less organic material towards the inlet or the outlet for, into the lake. That was actually pretty sandy up at that end. As you go further west in that marina, it got to be really peat soil or organic soils, up to, I think, sixty or seventy feet deep, so. You know, right now, it looks like the soil shouldn't be too bad. I think it's gonna be mostly sand on that end, but we'd have to verify that. And that estimate does assume we'd put helical pile on it. You know, again, without knowing what the soils are with the soil boring.
So, so cost-wise, you think it would be less to put it in the previous?
Probably. Probably.
Previous location?
I would think so. Well, again, it's sat there for how many years and it looks like it hasn't really moved around, so. Still would probably be a good idea to do a boring just to see what you got there. And again, right where it's at now, you wouldn't have the tree tree clearing or vegetation removal and kind of leveling things out.
Wouldn't wouldn't be an ideal place for a park or anything like that?
No, but if you if you wanted to do something a little nice for someone to walk out to it, it's just an idea. If you just want a lighthouse, you could do that too. Okay, that's all I had. So next, I guess maybe just send something, I'll get something put together to send, maybe send it to the city here to review it. And then if it looks okay, we'll just send something to them and see what they say. Okay? Okay, thank you.
Next on the agenda is we have Rob Severson to discuss snow removal on city sidewalks. Rob asked to be on the agenda, I guess he's not here, so. We do have an ordinance that discusses snow removal and and so forth on city streets and it's basically the property owner's responsibility to clear their sidewalks in front of their property and if it isn't done, the city could do it and charge the homeowner or the business or whatever or, you know, if they aren't able or something, they could maybe contact the city office, we might have some volunteers or or the city could do it. We also have West Central or what do they call it?
Central Initiative.
The West Central Initiative? Yeah, they do have a program for elderly people and so forth to help with sidewalks and minor landscaping and things like that. So people could apply for that too, so. But it is the property owner's responsibility, so. Moving on to the next part of the agenda. I just want to mention one thing on my be part is that the city is looking, next year would be the fortieth anniversary of our Heritage Days celebration. And the fortieth anniversary of the making of the largest lefSA. And we have for a long time in our past had the bandwagon as part of our Heritage Days Parade. And it it's currently in storage in Starbuck and we would like to see that in the parade next year. And so far, we've been having trouble communicating with the owners, but so possibly I might ask the council to to give an opinion on that or or whatever at a future meeting. To see if we can get that bandwagon back in the Heritage Days Parade, so. So that's, I just wanted to mention that as a possibility for a future meeting or work session or whatever, so. Next on the agenda is the police report. Mitch Johnson, Chief of Police, is not able to be here tonight. So is there any questions or comments from the council on that? If there's no questions or comments, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda is water and sewer and Randy Peterson or?
Hello, I just have a couple items. Uh, we had that effluent filter pump that WW Getch picked up at the wastewater plant. They took a look at it, they gave us an estimate on repairing the pump. I was, they estimated that four thousand nine hundred eighty-one dollars to kind of rebuild it. To replace it with a new one would be ten thousand eight hundred and sixty-eight dollars. I guess I would like approval to have our current one repaired and rebuilt. And then we would have a spare again for when the next one happens to go down.
So we currently have a spare?
This, well, we put the spare in there now. There's two pumps and they run pretty much nonstop all the time. They're pumping their effluent through from the wastewater plant to the filters before it goes in the river, so.
So there's two operating at the same time or?
One at a time, they alternate, but there's two pumps. So we we have three, um, so that we have a spare for one, so that we don't end up having two go down at one time or not have an extra one, so.
Any questions or comments from the council?
Is there a big difference on longevity? I mean, I'm sure there would be, but do we end up repairing them every couple of years, every few?
Uh, I'm trying to think off the top of my head. It's been, I want to say three years on this one about, a lot of it's got to do with lightning strikes or power surges and, you know. They're running all the time, so you get a lightning strike and, you know, a lot of things can happen too, so that'll shorten the life of on them up too.
Whether it's new or replaced or repaired?
You could put a brand new one in there and if a pole gets hit by lightning a block away or somebody hits a power line by, let's say, the Dairy Queen or something like that, that shorts out, you can you can burn out a lot of stuff.
When it says says the motor housing has been contaminated with water, is that a seal or a?
It's a submersible pump, so you get a seal or something that goes bad or, you know, it gets a nick in it while that gets water in there. And when it fills with water, water and electricity doesn't really mix well, so. That's when they, that's when they go out, you know, bearings go bad or or the bearings just wear out and then you get some play in there in that impeller or that shaft and that'll take your seal out too and that's, you end up getting water in there.
So it wouldn't help to change the seals more frequently or?
Well, you're looking at a lot of money. Just to do that, which you're gonna have, I mean, it's pretty much what you're paying for here, so. You kind of wait till they go and rebuild them at that point.
Well, I'd like to make a motion that we proceed with the repair of the pump for forty-nine hundred and eighty-one dollars.
I'll second that.
So we have a motion by myself and seconded by Councilman Tafe to go ahead with the repair of the pump so that we have a spare and to keep operating. So any other comments or questions? Not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried.
All right, and I have quote from Minnewaska Marine here for floats for our docks. Quote is seventeen thousand nine hundred and sixty dollars. And that would be for the forty-eight floats for our twenty-four docks that we are going to be building.
And I understand Randy, that's about what it was before?
Yeah, I believe it's right around the same price as it was last year, same price as last year.
Are we gonna go for a second quote or?
Um, I asked them several times and I never received one, so. This is the only one that was turned in, so I guess I would like approval to get them ordered so that we don't run into trouble where we can't get them, so.
I'll make the motion to move forward with ordering the floats.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Tafe to go ahead with the purchase of the floats for the for the new docks at the marina, seconded by Councilwoman Hanson. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none or in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Anything else?
That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next item on the agenda is the city clerk treasurer, so I'll turn it over to Joan.
You all have the third quarter budget comparison reports in your packets. I don't know if anybody has any questions on that. It's still looking pretty good. Our revenue for the general fund should be above target once we get our property taxes and the second payment for the LGA aid. And the only department that is a little bit over budget is parks. And that's basically to repair the storm damage that came through and also the fence that was approved for the baseball field. And we are getting reimbursed, um, our first check from the League of Minnesota Cities for the storm damage at thirty-three thousand dollars, so that'll pay for the roof replacement at the wastewater plant and some of the other things that we needed to do after that. So if anyone has any specific questions, you know, feel free to ask me anytime.
So we've had a number of unexpected expenditures this year, so, but.
And we're still fine, but, um, you know, I wouldn't maybe have any big huge expenditures the rest of the year if we can avoid it, but. So far, so good. And then the only other thing I had was that we probably need a work session to go over the fund budgets for twenty twenty-three and maybe take a quick look at our fee schedule for next year.
And possibly the
Talk about.
Lighthouse and assessments.
So I don't know if there's a time that works. We were kind of thinking of Thursday, November, is that Thursday?
December first.
December first, right.
Can you say that right now, Joan? Yep, that's good.
I don't know what, I know it might not work for Joe.
We could send out an email, email to to everybody and.
I'll propose something and you guys can get back to me. That's all I had.
Moving on, I think new business, uh, first item of new business is to approve resolution twenty twenty-two dash twenty-three, which is a summary publication of the new ordinance number one thirteen regulating the sale of tetrahydrocannabinol, THC. So any discussion or questions on that? There's there's one item that that we wanted to discuss and that was currently as written, it's only allowed in the highway business district, zoning district. If you look at your zoning maps, the highway business is is in the pink, is a pink. The business district is in purple. So. You know, I I guess I would like to just discuss whether we should limit it to just highway business or business district and highway business?
There seems to be more options going into the downtown area in the business district.
I would agree, the business district seems to make sense.
Do you think it should include both business and highway highway business? I'm sorry?
You'd have schools, daycares and churches.
And churches.
Yeah, the ordinance prohibits anything within three hundred feet of the of any daycare. Well, some of it, yeah, yeah.
From the Dan and Nutcracker?
But then the highway business would be pretty, I mean, restrictive, you know, to one or two places.
Yeah, it's basically Casey's and Senex.
Well, Casey's gets pretty close to the church business too, don't it?
With phone right there.
We'd have to look at it.
Yeah.
But the ordinance is three hundred feet, just like we were talking before about.
Right, yep. I think including the business district gives it more options.
Well, I would be fine with both the business district and highway business.
Yeah, I think so too. I'll make the motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-two dash twenty-three with the addition of adding business district.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Tafe to approve resolution twenty twenty-two dash twenty-three with the addition of including the business district, seconded by Councilwoman Hanson. And is there any further questions or discussion? Hearing none or in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Next item on the agenda is to authorize the interfund transfer of fifty-nine thousand seven seventy-five for the twenty twenty-two Hovle Park expenses. And that comes from Hovle Park funds to the city for sewer, water, police and so forth, so.
I'll make the motion to approve the interfund transfer of fifty-nine thousand seven hundred and seventy-five dollars for Hovle Park expenses.
I'll second that. Okay. So I have a motion by Councilman Tafe to approve the interfund transfer of fifty-nine thousand seven hundred and seventy-five for twenty twenty-two Hovle Park expenses, seconded by Councilwoman Balko. Is there any further discussion or questions? Hearing none or in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Next item on the agenda is to approve sending past due utility bills over sixty days delinquent to the tax rolls at seven percent interest.
I'll make a motion to approve sending past due utility bills over sixty days delinquent to the tax rolls at seven percent interest.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilwoman Hanson to approve sending past due utility bills over sixty days delinquent to tax rolls at seven percent interest. Seconded by Councilman Tafe. Is there any further discussion or questions? Hearing none or in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Next item on the agenda is to approve public hearing at our December twelfth, twenty twenty-two council meeting to subdivide city land on PID twenty-seven dash zero six one nine dash zero zero zero, which is the the property that we discussed at our last council meeting.
I'll make that motion to approve the public hearing on December twelfth.
I'll second that.
So we have a motion by Councilman Tafe to approve a public hearing at our December twelfth council meeting to subdivide city land on PID number twenty-seven dash zero six one nine dash zero zero zero, seconded by Councilwoman Hanson. seconded by Councilwoman Hanson. Uh, any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried.
Number twenty-two.
Right.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Okay, I skipped one. Uh, so the next item is approving, approve sending non-payment of administrative citations for blight to the tax rolls at ten percent interest. And what do we have, four of them or?
I'll make the motion to approve sending non-payment, uh, citation, citations for blight to the tax rolls at ten percent interest.
And I'll second that one for sure. Okay. We have a motion by Councilman Tafe to approve sending non-payment of administrative citations for blight to tax rolls at ten percent interest, seconded by Councilwoman Balko. Is there any further questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Did we approve that? I got confused, so. Next item on the agenda is to approve Resolution 2022-25, uh, which is the canvassing for the November eighth, 2022 election results.
I'll make the motion to approve Resolution 2022-25.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Okay. So we have a motion to approve Resolution 2022-25 canvassing, November eighth, 2022 election results, uh, seconded by Councilwoman Hanson. And I'll just, uh, mention that everyone was running unopposed, uh, so, uh, I will continue as mayor. Chris Tafe will continue as a council member. And next year we'll welcome Dane Christensen as a, a councilman to replace Jill Hanson, so. Uh, is there any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Uh, next on the agenda is to request to add a street light at the curve of Abercrombie and Second Street. And, uh,
Who runs that?
I do.
I think we, uh,
Will you start walking home with me, Mary?
Something's going on out here.
I think we, we reached, uh, we reached out to, we reached out to our city engineers, Wedsith, and, uh, they referred us to the, uh, website with Excel Energy for outdoor lighting and so forth, and, uh, uh, we're gonna look at what the costs are and, and so forth and, uh, and probably, uh, you know, have a table for next council meeting, so.
Is there, um, it, it looks to me like you typically have a light per every block. And so that would be like the block, that spot would be.
Has there never been a light there?
There was a long time ago. I don't know if it was a candle, but there was.
Can't hang a lantern or something?
No, no, not anymore. You know, I don't know how long ago was when they redid that road and then made the holding pond. And I think it was about that time or maybe even before that. It was, it never came back.
Disappeared, huh? Okay.
But there had been a light.
But if that's okay with you, we'd like to.
Oh, yeah, it just, I'm just happy Nick found it.
Yeah. We have to figure out the cost so the council can approve it and so forth.
It's been thirty years, so that's fine.
All right.
Thank you.
Uh, next on the agenda is potential Resolution 2022-24 vacating a dedicated row between two oh six Main Street and two oh eight Main Street, west to Wallen. And we had the public hearing on that. Is there any further discussion or questions? Uh, if not, I'll make a motion that we, uh, proceed with the vacation of, of that dedicated row between two oh six Main Street and two oh eight Main Street, west to Wallen.
I'll second that.
Okay. So we have a motion by myself to, uh, approve Resolution 2022-24 vacating a dedicated row between two oh six Main Street and two oh eight Main Street, west to Wallen, seconded by Councilwoman Tafe. Uh, any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Last item on the agenda is the, uh, uh, the control system for heating and cooling in the community center here. And I'll let, I know if you want to talk about it, tell me.
Sure. We, for quite a few years have been having trouble controlling the temperature in the office, the community room, the fire station. Um, we've had electricians in numerous times to try to fix that. And nothing has worked well, especially when it's between seasons, when you're switching over, you know, turning on the boilers for winter or trying to get the air running for summer. So I don't know if Randy has anything else to add to it, but we got a bid from Johnson Controls to, um, put in a new system that will regulate everything that they'll guarantee the work on. And I don't know, this system has been here sixteen, seventeen years, so. Anyway, that's in your bid there, but I mean, it's kind of a significant cost. Have to grab the paper here, but fourteen, fourteen thousand eight hundred and five dollars to do that. And then we still need to, um, have an electrician come in for a little bit of the work. So, I think in the long run, it would probably save money because there's lots of times we have the heat and the air conditioning running at the same time and we can't stop it, so. I think it's probably a good idea, but it was a little more expensive than we hoped.
Is there a problem with the thermostat or something?
Um.
Are the sensors detecting the temperature or something?
That's probably part of the problem. They've tried to fix that in various ways and nothing's worked. So we put new thermostats on, we've done multiple things.
It's all on one system or are they separate?
Um, they're separate systems.
Separate thermostats?
Yeah, yeah, we have like three separate thermostats and then we have the in-floor boiler heat.
Okay.
So, I don't know, anything, Randy? Does that kind of sum it up?
Pretty much. There, there should have been a master control that tells you what is running and what is supposed to be running and what is not, so there's nothing that really tells you what is called for and what's not called for. Um, I think they're gonna replace a lot of the thermostats in the floor on the walls and all that, have kind of a, a master control so that it, it tells you what should be running and if it is running.
My, my understanding is Johnson Controls said that should have been done in the first place.
Yeah.
Is that gonna be tearing up flooring and stuff too then or?
No.
No, they can go with the system that's?
A little piece of a wall somewhere, but, yeah.
So they can still use the existing stuff? They don't have to put anything new?
It is something we could use, the, um, ARP, the ARP funds for, if we wanted to use that towards paying for it, we could do that.
Well, if it's gotta get done, I think we better get it done. Because it ruins everything. When would they be able to come in and do the work?
Um, we don't know exactly. Um, they have to order the.
It'd be next year's.
Yeah.
Right, it'll go into next year's fund.
If they have to order the materials, I don't think they'd get it done this year.
They'd also provide training to our staff and so forth on how to operate it and so forth, so. I'll make the motion too. So. Anyway, over, over the past few years, we've had somebody in, what, two or three times, I think, to work on the
Oh, a mint and a lot more. Yeah.
Plus Phil John Cho is been in to work on, on the system.
I was gonna say, we're probably at that right now, just in repairs.
So.
I'll make the motion to, uh, go ahead and get the new sys, uh, get the repair done to the heating and cooling systems.
And I'll second that. Okay. So we have a motion by Councilman Tafe to go ahead with, uh, approving the, uh, uh, fixing of the, uh, heating and air conditioning system, uh, from Johnson Controls, seconded by Councilwoman Balko. Uh, any further discussions or questions? It'd probably come out of next year's budget, right?
It would. We could, would talk about where to take it out of.
Sure.
I don't think they'll have it ready for this year.
Mm-hmm. All right, so.
The price is good till December fifteenth, so.
Okay. Is there any further questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you, everyone. Uh, that concludes our agenda. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
We have a motion to adjourn. We are adjourned. Thank you.